That's wrong. This is right.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, August 20th. The time is 6 o'clock. That clock is not right. I'm using myself. Would you all please rise for the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, August 20th. The time is 6 o'clock. That clock is not right. I'm using myself. Would you all please rise for the flag of the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again, and thank you all for coming to this meeting. The first item on the agenda is roll call.
Debona.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trinhell.
Here.
Olmertrey.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Grado.
Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Do I have anyone, anyone, anyone to make any adjustments or changes to the agenda? No? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So.
Second?
Second.
Call for vote.
Williamson.
Yes.
Debona.
Here.
Olmertrey.
Yes.
Shu.
Yes.
Trinhell.
Yes.
Grado.
Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff reports.
Mayor Council, nothing to name. We have some things further down on the agenda.
Okay. Item number four, petitions or communications all are written. Please be advised that there's a five-minute limit on petitions and communications. We ask that you be respectful to council, to staff, and to the audience members, please. Mr. Downs, are you going to time us again?
I will, just a minute.
Okay. Mr. Downs, our city attorney, is going to time us, and he will give you a one-minute warning when you've got one minute left. The first person on the sign-up sheet is Lori Lynn Williams, and she wants to talk about homeless in Inbank. And also, there is, the second person wanting to speak is Desi Sacarison, and she also wants to speak on the same issues. Would you ladies like to come up and present together, or do you want five minutes each?
We can present together.
It's up to you.
Together.
Okay. Yes. I'd like to remind everybody that you should turn your cellphones off and remove your hats. I know sometimes it's like a part of your body.
I understand. Stand right there. If you can speak into the mic so everybody in the audience can hear you.
Okay. So, we're from Inbank, and we came into the meeting tonight to address the homeless situation that you're probably all aware of. That's been happening over at the park, and then too, now not recently, at Inbank, on the south side of the building. We have paid in about $1,400 now to have the graffiti painted. There's benches that are over there that they use as their bathrooms. It's not our janitor's responsibility to go and clean that up, all the trash that is back there. Just every day, what we get to see across at the park. The police have been great, you know. They get calls from us constantly to have them removed, you know, which I'm sure they're tired of too, upset about. Another issue that we have is through our drive-through. We get customers that call that are scared to go through the drive-through because they're either, you know, loitering right there, or they're fighting, whatever the issue may be. As to our staff that has to go fill the ATM, that is a safety issue for them too, to have to go out there. So we try to monitor that too, and then, you know, watch out for our staff as they go out there. Bathrooms is another issue. You know, I know they are locked up for a reason, but, you know, tourists do try to come, and we let them use the bathroom at Inbank, but also have the homeless that try to come in too, to use charging of the cellphones in our lobby, which we tell them that they can't. The panhandling, as Lori has had to shoo them away because as our customers are going out, they're out there trying to, you know, for money, and it scares our customers too. I will let Lori, if I miss anything, to address as well.
Well, we also want to thank Erin. Erin has done a wonderful job. I've talked to Manny on the phone a few times about these issues too. Erin was nice enough to go around and look at everything on the side of the bank.
Erin who?
Williamson, I'm sorry.
We've got two Erins.
Oh, yes, true. And so he also, I think it led him on a little nature hike through some of the Trinidad area that he mentioned in his last video that took him all through Safeway, down through the river bottom. So I think by having graffiti shown on various places, I can't speak for the other businesses around us, but without it being cleaned up in a timely manner, it condones the fact that we can go ahead and graffiti this. It's become their personal chalkboard. And I guess part of it is, I don't know what that graffiti means. So I don't know what it says. I don't know if it's a mark. I don't know if it's a code. I don't know what they stand for. But again, Erin has been, Mr. Williamson has been very kind at helping us with that, taking that under his wing. You help council members here that are truly wanting to help with this situation. I don't know where our hands are tied on this. I was told at one time by the chief of police that they do have rights. Yes, they do. I understand that. But they don't have the rights to do what they are doing. And the bank again has come to over $1,400 in repairs. I don't know if the bank is going to continue to do that. I don't feel that that is also on the bank, and they'll have to discuss that with our upper leadership to just where do we draw the line on taking care of all of this at all times, and our customers are very much at risk. We have had to walk customers out there. They've come back into the bank frightened. They are panhandling there. And again, it's a domino effect. We don't know what's happening with children. We don't know what's happening with their animals. If they're able to act this way around others, then it is a deep concern. And I'm just hoping that we can do, take care of this and get some extra aid. We also have to remember that as a bank, we have issues where we've had to detain people on fraudulent checks. And we had a gentleman that was there. We finally had him in person, and we were ready to have him arrested. And it takes a while for the police to come. I don't know, unfortunately, they get called out there so many times if they think they're coming to another issue with the bank, but they have to also remember that this is a bank. We could have an armed robbery. We could have something else going on that we need to pay attention to, as well as any of the other businesses here. You just don't know at any given time what they are capable of, or anybody at that matter. So we just came to with an open mind to see what we could do to work together. I think that we all try very hard to meet those goals and see what we need to do as businesses to maybe help the council work directly and to try and nip this in the bud. I just feel that it's going to get worse.
Thank you. Jesus Gonzalez, same as above homelessness, I presume?
Thank you, members of council, for your time today. I want to share some, just a little bit of what I see on the corner of Cedar Street and Commercial Street, you know. Had some alarming things happen just a couple of weeks ago, and I had the property owner right across the street from me reach out to me. And, you know, we were, we were both alarmed by the kind of level of the escalation of what's really happening down there in the park, on the river bottom and stuff, and, you know, this was, what do we do? You know, how do we, how do we reach out? Who do we talk to? You know, and I reached out to a couple of people. Reached out to Mr. Williamson on council, and, you know, it was refreshing to know that you guys already have a plan that you're working on. This is not something that is gone by the wayside. And, you know, then I was also talking with Commissioner Felix Lopez, and Mr. Lopez explained to me that they had, that you would have a special meeting in order to kind of address this and where you guys were going to go to this. So I want to say, first of all, thank you for that, and thank you for taking the time to understand kind of what we're going through. And, you know, what I would really like to ask is for more teeth for our police officers here within the community to give them the ability to kind of move people on from those businesses. I know right now, as it sits today, if I call, they will come out, they will move them along. And it's, you know, they're responding very, very quickly, and they, the local community, that is the little vagrancy community that's out there, they're getting the idea. They're moving on. They're understanding that the pressure is coming. And I think we need to, you know, keep on with that pressure. I think we're doing a really, really great job. I think we're moving in a positive direction. And, you know, right now, we're losing, we're losing a lot of jobs in our community from the oil and gas industry. We're really reeling from that, you know, with what happened in Coal Mine, what happened with XTO. You know, we don't, we don't just look at those, between just those companies along the 400 jobs that are, so the families that are no longer in the community anymore. Those are, you know, we, our restaurant community, our downtown area, that's, we're paying a strong amount of taxes, and we get a lot of times one impression to make with people as they come through, as they're traveling through with their family. And every person that comes in to the restaurant, I try to implore to them, what a wonderful town it is, what great history that it is, and, you know, to please explore with us, you know, there's so much wonderful in this. And as a business owner, I'm caught in a conflict of meeting a wonderful couple who is from, you know, Santa Fe, and they want to take a walk on the riverfront, you know. Can I in good faith tell them? Is that something that I want to have on my conscience to tell somebody that, please, go walk on that riverfront? It's absolutely gorgeous. And, you know, we go, we can go to, you know, websites that are around them directing us for a visit to Trinidad is that all of our trails are very senior-friendly. Guess what they are? They're wonderfully flat, beautiful trails, and they're dangerous to walk on, you know. So we have, we have, we've done such great work in the small seven years that we've been here, that I've been here in this community, and I see the steps being taken for what the next 10 years are going to look like, and it looks really, really positive. Small steps like being able to give the police the teeth that they need to help patrol our streets and keep us safe because our community is at risk right now. Our business owners, our employees, you know, our customers, those of us who have Airbnbs in our building and stuff, you know, it's dangerous for them at night, you know. It's becoming a larger safety issue in our.
One minute, sir.
Our police staff is frankly overwhelmed and frustrated that they don't have the teeth that they need to properly please. And we can look out to what other communities have and what they've had success with, and use that as a blueprint to try to help us for the future. Thank you so much for your time today, and I appreciate all your hard work you've already done.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Loretta Cusimano says homeless, and I'm assuming it's smoker-friendly, right?
Yeah. I couldn't write on it. Thank you, members of council. I'm here also with them, you know, I manage smoker-friendly. Constantly, there are me and the businesses down the street constantly having to call the cops to have them move along. They're sitting outside our store smoking their pipes, and it's not marijuana. Sometimes cops chase them off, sometimes they don't. I know their hands are tied. They're always outside my store panhandling. They're scaring my customers. I've had so many people say they won't come back to my store. They're scared to come back to my store. I have to literally park across the street at Toyota to get in my car to drive to Inbank. But I can't park on the side of my store because I go around the corner, and they're sitting right there, groups of them, sitting there. And here I am carrying a deposit. I don't feel safe. They're constantly in our dumpsters in the back alley. It's not safe for my employees to go back there to dump the trash. So I'm just, I'm with the others. I'm just hoping that we can get something done and find some solution to this because it's not safe, and my customers don't feel safe, my employees don't feel safe, and I don't feel safe down there. So the other thing is, we had a burglary the other night, 1:15 in the morning. The cops responded quickly. They did come by one time, but as me and the gentleman that was fixing the door were standing out there, I was standing on the corner facing Chamina Park, the cops were down there. So eight to 10 of them were coming around the corner at our store, where we have no window in there right now because it had been broke out, asking, can we come in and buy pastries? I guess 3 o'clock in the morning, no. Wanting money. One of them swinging down the sidewalk, carrying his big old bottle of vodka. So we weren't even safe out there. Didn't feel safe putting that window, the plywood up on that window. So, like I said again, I'm just with the others. We've got to see what we can do to get control of this and just keep them off of Commercial Street there. They're really chasing people away, and it's going to affect our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Virginia Jimenez wants to speak on the Creative District.
Hello. My name is Virginia Jimenez. I am on the board for the Corazón de Trinidad Creative District. And I sincerely feel that the thing I came to talk to you about feels very trite, suddenly. But I will say, just, you know, like, the arts can elevate our community, and I think we've done a beautiful thing with that in our district, all of our artists and organizations. But it's also very difficult to elevate a community that can also not meet the basic needs of people that are trying to live here, drug addicts or otherwise. So I know that that's challenging. I met someone one day, and they were like, yeah, we're going to do a painting for the homeless. I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's not what they need. So I, that being said, I was coming, I am here to invite you to our literary festival that is happening this September, and to also just give you a few details about what the Creative District has been up to in the last year. And where do I start? So the, I'll start with the literary festival. I've been very busy organizing this with our literary committee. It's a four-day event that happens from September 19th to September 22nd. 50% of the festival is free and open to the public. The almost all of the event is open and free for students. There are lots of come-to workshops for free, and that includes students of any kind. Last year, we had 10 or 12 students attend the workshops for the festival. This year, we are turning it into our annual fundraiser, so we're having a fundraising dinner on September 20th, which is the Friday evening of the festival, which is the only portion that's not free for anyone. And I am working to make sure that this event is accessible to all of our folks in Trinidad. 60% of our population is made up of people under the age of 18 or over the age of 60. And so I believe that it's really important for those people to have access to events like these. So in addition to having workshops be free for students, we are also doing workshops in the schools leading up to the event, and those are free for the schools. I also have just recently secured a partnership with S-COg. They usually don't run their buses on the evenings or weekends, but in order for me to have seniors at our event, I need that. And so I've secured a partnership with them where they will run the buses for seniors who would like to attend the event. I've also made it as affordable as I can for our community because I understand that we also, you know, we're a little lower on the income scale generally, like across the board, I would say. So I would really appreciate your support and attendance for the dinner particularly because we're going to have some really wonderful things going on that evening. We have the poet laureate from the Western Slope doing a keynote. Another poet from the Western Slope will be doing a performance. A writer and musician from Denver named Stace Johnson will be doing a performance as well. And then our local Rosin and Rust, Jeff and Sam Montoya, will be there as well. And that's just the entertainment portion. So, yeah, I'm very excited about that. It'll be catered by All Max, so I hope that you can join us. The other thing that I would like to tell you about is the exhibits that we're currently aiding at the Commons. We have the scenic historic, scenic and historic byways photography exhibit, which is really lovely. If you don't want to drive on all of the scary mountain passes, this is a great way to go see them. The photographers are Colorado photographers, and it's really exciting. We'll have that until the beginning of October. On October 4th, we will be opening The Hands of Trinidad, which is a portrait and photo exhibit by Daryl O. During our Smithsonian event, she was one of, a part of our companion exhibit called Grow, Raise, Make, and that's kind of, she started this project. She received a prize that called the Sharon Prize, and that's enabled her to expand it. And so we are giving her her own exhibit. She's taking more portraits. We have a date with the seniors at the Senior Center later this week. What I like the most about this particular exhibit, if you aren't familiar, if you haven't seen it yet, she's taking full-body portraits of locals as well as a portrait of their hands. And she's titled it The Hands of Trinidad as inspiration from Altman's The Faces of Trinidad. And so we are in the works with Margie Farandelli to have a partnership with History Colorado to get some of Altman's natives that we can imprint and have some of his original portraits as part of the exhibit as well. But the thing that I think that is most important about this exhibit is that it, I believe it will help to, help to bridge a gap that exists. In Trinidad, there are a lot of us versus them groups.
And Virginia, you're right at five minutes, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't.
No, that's totally okay.
Everybody hates me. I keep interrupting people, but you, but you.
No, that's fine. I'll just wrap up real quick. I think it will be really important because she's taking portraits of people who've lived here forever, families that have been here forever, people who just showed up and are trying to do something cool and good or figure it out. She's taking pictures of young people, of elders in the community, so I think it is a really beautiful exhibit. That opens on October 4th, and I hope that you will come see that exhibit. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Murphy wants to speak on the City Manager.
And City Attorney.
Mayor, I forgot to put that down. Mayor, Council, and Staff. I'm Tom Murphy from Limerick, Trinidad, if you don't know me. I just want to shout out to Steve and Les, to both you guys, for all that you've done. I've been here for a long time, and with Steve, I remember a book, Court of Jim Sotis, and there's a lot of dusty people, you know, in his time, and you've been a bright light. It's reassuring that Mike's coming back, and we appreciate that. And with Les, people don't know, 10 years ago, that Joey Ardis said, find revenue. We were hurting. I've lived here long enough to go through enough booms and busts. And if we had had different attorneys, and I've told them this privately, we easily could have gone in a different direction. There are millions of dollars in the bank, and there are millions of dollars that have been spent on buildings to fix them up. And I could have easily gone in a different direction with the other attorneys that we had. And so I think, I want to give credit where credit is due, and that goes to Les. He helped steer them through this. You and Anthony Mate, although Anthony could be somewhat long-winded and eloquent, I mean, we could, if anybody was here, knew that. I mean, Anthony was somebody who fought against marijuana all his life, but with critical thinking sat down and said, you know what, we need to approve this, and it turned things around here. And I know people are a little, little concerned that we're dipping down again, but, you know, if we've been here long enough, we've been through it all before. And I don't know, Frank, if you were on that council 10 years ago that made that decision. It was close. It was real close. And we easily could have somebody else given different legal advice that was just adamantly against it. And there are people that are adamantly against it, and I get it. You know, the, no matter what, they're not going to change it. But it has made a difference in Trinidad. And so thank you to both of you. I really appreciate all that you guys have done. And Manny, you're not, you're not wrong either. I think you guys deserve a raise. I'm not trying to brown you always. Erin knows I said that, you know, about eight years ago. I think you guys do a tremendous, a lot of work in this community, and it's not that much that people are proposing, but guys, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Neil Paul wants to speak on homeless.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to be here. I was actually invited to attend, according to Neil Paul.
Yes.
So then, I was somewhat invited to speak, not compelled, but just invited, about the homeless situation. I think, you know, most of you know what I do here in town, whatever, present. It is a situation, homeless situation, situation across the country. We all know that. The pandemic did its thing. It's been an issue for generations before. I guess I just want to be another voice saying that it is an issue. However, I really thank, kind of ditto his words, you guys do a lot of work, and I don't get involved with as much as maybe I'd like to. If I could help more with any situation, homeless situation, whatever, I'd be happy to do that. Coming from Denver, I would tell you that Trinidad is looked at, is considered by a lot of people, and looked at pretty highly. And I see good economic fight days ahead. I know there's a lot of people coming from out of state, but I think that there's a great corridor north of here for economic benefits, where I think a lot of people would like to relocate here, have second, third properties here, recreate here, raise a family, retire here. There's a lot of opportunities here if the community wants that. You know, the homelessness issue, I just, I appreciate that you guys are in front of it, on top of it. I just came out of a homeless coalition meeting at 3 o'clock, and they have this coordinated response program that they're working on, so in the long term, that I'm hoping will definitely help the situation for the short term or something. You know, you guys are on it, so I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Danielle Rollo on homeless.
Hi. My name is Danielle Rollo. I am a real estate broker with Southern Colorado Realty. And I know this isn't the first time. I've come before you guys. It's been an issue that I've dealt with for years. I know when Erin was running the first time, talked to you about my concerns then. And I'd like to first start by saying I believe there's two issues. There's homeless, which they need help. And then there's crime that's happening, and that needs to be addressed. So at your last work session, I put together a real quick packet of something that just happened that I was in the middle of dealing with, and it's not just in the downtown area. This was on Topeka Street, in a residential area. To date, we're $19,000 in without one repair. If I could help more with any situation, homeless situation or whatever, I'd be happy to do that. Coming from Denver, I would tell you that Trinidad is looked at, is considered by a lot of people, and looked at pretty highly. And I see good economic fight days ahead. I know there's a lot of people coming from out of state, but I think that there's a great corridor north of here for economic benefits. Where I think a lot of people would like to relocate here, have second, third properties here, recreate here, raise a family, retire here. There's a lot of opportunities here if the community wants that. You know, the homelessness issue, I just, I appreciate that you guys are in front of it, on top of it. I just came out of a homeless coalition meeting at three o'clock. And they have this coordinated response program that they're working on. So in the long term, that I'm hoping will definitely help the situation for the short term or something, you know. You guys are on it, so I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Rollo on homeless.
Hi, my name is Danielle Rollo. I am a real estate broker with Southern Colorado Realty. And I know this isn't the first time I've come before you guys. It's been an issue that I've dealt with for years. I know when Aaron was running, the first time, talked to you about my concerns then. And I'd like to first start by saying I believe there's two issues. There's homeless, which they need help. And then there's crime that's happening, and that needs to be addressed. So at your last work session, I put together a real quick packet of something that just happened that I was in the middle of dealing with. And it's not just in the downtown area. This was on Topeka Street, in a residential area. To date, we're nineteen thousand dollars in without one repair. Squatters took over that property. Next door is a house that is in really bad shape. It's got several code violations. They moved next door. So we went to court, we got the eviction. Fifteen thousand dollars to clean it up before meth testing, before fentanyl testing. We're still waiting for the testing to come back. So it could be even higher. And that's just one issue in one house. I have been dealing with this for years. Every day, there's expenses to my property owners to clean up ash, clean up after cigarette containers that are gone through, to clean up broken windows. It's, I could, I could print out ledgers for you this long. It is a cost, a private cost to the community where these homeowners and building owners could be reinvesting it into our community in a positive way. And it also would help keeps rents down if there wasn't damage. Every time there's damage, it makes they have to recoup their money. So I just wanted you guys to look at it from a perspective of we have laws in place. Trespassing is a real issue. It is not punished. And I love our police officers. They come every time I call them, but they don't, they can't, or they don't. I don't know what the, I don't know what the laws are. They don't do anything except move them along or remove them from the property. And it is, it's a serious problem. And I, I used to come a lot and talk about it. I never saw anything change, so I kept coming. But now I'm coming again, and I'm begging you guys, please, we need to start enforcing laws. And at the same time, help the people that really need help because we need to do that. We do have a serious problem with our homeless population, but it has to be looked at in two different boxes, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Richard, but I can't read the last name, and there's no subject matter. Got you? What's your last name, sir?
Morquero.
Okay.
I didn't really put a topic tag on it. Been for like two years. I like the town.
Move closer to the podium so we can hear you. Alrighty.
That's not connected, so. I like the town. Town's good. Homeless, they're going to be everywhere. I agree it's a twofold problem, but I think also there's a third wheel too. And as a citizen, I don't think we clearly know where our rights are in dealing with them. So we pass the buck to the police, who we assume will take care of it, and then nothing gets done. And now, nothing gets done doesn't mean like they didn't do something. But they did the least, you know, half of least resistance, the ones that's going to cost the less money. They're just going to keep coming back. Either they like the area, or they keep getting what they need. Something needs a food source. So, you know, figure that out, find a way. I think that'll work. Arts District is cool, but I don't really see a lot of, I don't know, like, when I came here, you guys had Cartopia. And I was like, that's a cool thing. No town has that. And then I was like, alright, things come and go. I have artist friends. I come from Bethlehem. They have an art district in Pennsylvania. So they've kind of been doing that art districting for a while. That's how they revitalize their town from being a, like, iron steel once that died down, and then they just switched over to the arts. It worked. I think that's kind of the vibe that would go well here. I think that's where you're going for it. I went to the, haven't made it to the top of the peak. Speed me. Only got to a seat, but it's beautiful. And it's like a little gem that I didn't know was there. Like, I've been going through a lot of stresses. I'm a veteran in, you know, life is life. But I took that walk, you know, looking, yeah, this is a really nice place. So kind of, you know, bringing that together. I don't know what to say. Nice town. Happy to be here. I don't know what we can do about the homeless. It's people being people, nomads and settlers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, counsel cannot speak during petitions and communications. Some of the homeless issues will be addressed during council reports. Three of us at the council was at the homeless coalition meeting today along with Mr. Rugar. And we will present during council reports. So thank you all for coming. Item number five is a consent agenda approval. Item number five A is approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 6th, 2024, and a special meeting minutes of August 13th, 2024. Item five B, approval of bills totaling one million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and five cents. And item five C is approval of payroll between the time of August 3rd of 2024 through August 16th of 2024. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Hold. Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
Truhell?
Yes.
Oltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item six A, it's a public hearing. Public hearing for consideration of inordinance submitting to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, a referendum to increase three percent lodging tax originally authorized by the registered electors on November 6th, 2001, to six percent, the proceeds of which to be used for the purposes authorized by Chapter Seven, Section Seven dash forty-six of the Trinidad Municipal Code, or as may be amended as a tax increase pursuant to Section Twenty of Article Ten of the Colorado Constitution. The hearing is now open.
Mayor Counsel, we are joined tonight by representatives of the Trust for Public Lands. They've been helping us do some polling and helping us kind of do some research as to what the pulse of the community is on this question, and then doing some analysis for this. So I'd like to, with the council's permission, invite our friends. So Jason Swan is here, Danny Hand, and they have an update. You also have a presentation in front of you that's kind of outlines what they're finding. So I will turn it over to you gentlemen.
Well, everyone, my name is Jason Swan. I'm the Conservation Finance Director for the Trust for Public Land. Thank you, Captain, for this opportunity to talk about some of the transformative work that we do at the Trust for Public Land, but specifically around this ballot measure. Danny with F and Three is going to introduce himself. He is the, one of the senior researchers with our latest poll.
Thank you, Jason. If I could, could somebody give me a sharing access or share the slide?
Give us one second. We've got to share. Okay, you should be good, Danny.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, I think everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Great. Yes, okay. So my name's Danny Han, Research Associate at F and Three. We're a public opinion research firm based in California and Oregon. Although we've also done a ton of work in the mountain states as well. I myself recently finished a state poll in Montana. And we've done a couple statewide surveys in Colorado over the last election cycles and have had the pleasure of surveying your city back in 2018, which we have some of the data available today as comparison. And with that, we'll just jump right to the survey. So the survey was conducted over the course of a week with likely November 2024 voters. It was conducted via phone calls as well as online interviews through text invitations. The sample size is seventy-seven, and margin of error is about twenty-three percent. So a bit of context for your community to understand the results. So we asked them if things felt like they were going in the right direction in Trinidad or off on the wrong track. As you can see here, we have 2018 data for comparison, and voters feel a lot more pessimistic today than they were six years ago. Now, this is part, of course, of what we're seeing around the country. Voters in general are feeling a lot more pessimistic, as I'm sure the council members are well aware. Lots of things that they feel like are headed in the wrong direction, regardless of the economy, homelessness, and so on. We asked voters if they feel like there is a need for funding for outdoor recreation, open spaces, parks in Trinidad. Seventy-two percent of voters say that there is at least some need, and just under half, forty-four percent, say there's a great need for funding. Voters who are most likely to say that there is a great need for funding are typically Democrats under the age of fifty, Democratic men, women over the age of fifty, and, oh, I'm sorry, women under the age of fifty and men over the age of fifty. And we'll see how this plays out in terms of support for a potential ballot measure for funding recreation in a moment. So we presented voters with a potential ballot measure. This ballot measure would be a majority threshold to pass. It would be a tax on transient occupancy, so hotels and such. Based on the ballot measure language, above fifty-four percent of voters support the survey. Now, this is still within the margin of error, which, as a reminder, is about two percent. Breaking down support for the measure, we see that women are much more likely than men. I shouldn't say much more likely, but more likely than men to support the measure, fifty-seven percent, as are voters with pre-age of forty and Democrats. We also broke down how their view of funding need for recreation impacts their support. As we see before, those who say that there is a great need for funding support the measure massively. Seventy percent of those who say that there is a great need for funding support the measure, which means that their preferences link up with what's in the measure. Sometimes we see that voters see there's a need for funding for something, but don't that measure because there, there might be something in the measure that's subjective to them, but this lines up with their preference. We asked voters how they would feel about a ten-year sunset and how that would impact their support for the measure. But this doesn't really meet the need at all that much. Support still rests at just that slight majority of fifty-three percent. We then presented voters with a plain language explanation of what the ballot measure would do. It would increase Trinidad's existing lodging tax to six percent and use that twenty to maintain parks, trails, river access, parks and cultural activities and tourism. And tax could be primarily paid by hotel guests, as well as being subjected to animal. And that plain language explanation, I think mainly the part that says voters themselves are not responsible for this, for this tax, makes them realize, okay, this is a lot more appealing. So support jumps by eight points to sixty-two percent after that. We asked voters, based on a list of things that this potential measure could fund, what their priorities are. We asked them to rank each item based on a scale of extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not too important. Immediately, we can see that wildfire risk, mitigating wildfire risk is a number-one priority for them. Based on a survey that FM Three last conducted in Trinidad back in 2018, wildfire risk was a very important issue for them back then as well. So I'm not surprised to see it emerge again as a top issue here. Other issues that come up include graffiti and cleaning up graffiti and trash at parks, protecting wildlife habitat, protecting open spaces, park lighting, improving safety, as well as improving, or I should say, providing local youth support opportunities. About four in five voters say that all of the items that I just mentioned are at least very important to them. We also have a couple items that are a little bit less on the prior, a little less important to them than the items I previously mentioned. However, these are still, as we see, important to a majority of voters. That includes improving access to people with disabilities, as well as maintaining a central park. A little further down the list are items like pickleball courts and developing new trails. This is not to say that funding should not be spent on these things or that you should not pursue any of these items, but just that voters are feeling like these are less of a priority for them at the moment. We asked voters about themes that might appeal to them and how that impacts their support throughout this whole exchange. In general, support for the measure rests above that degree. And here we have some of the themes that we tested with voters are metric. So for context, the way we ask you, voters, is we present them with a series of messages and ask them to rate them based on a scale of very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not convincing. Our rule of thumb for what's an effective theme to talk about with voters is if more than forty percent of voters say that that theme is quote, "very convincing." So we see here that more than half of voters say that the theme around getting kids into the outdoors is very convincing to them. And that for us is a very good sign. So, you know, with today's digital age, it's important to give kids a place to go outside, or parks, trails, and programs for the youth, and improve their mental health as well. Other themes that stand out to voters, again, going back to what we saw earlier with the plain language explanation, voters emphasizing the fact that this is not a tax paid for by voters is something that appeals to them. As well as the arguments around cost of living, because cost of living increases. We need to have more affordable places to rent the outside home, maintaining parks, investing them to make sure that people still have access to them is something that appeals to voters as well. Additionally, fire access is also what we, is close enough to what we would consider the benchmark. Sorry, not fire access, fire safety and fire mitigation. Less effective down the line are messages with that discuss maintaining quality of life, appeals to the economy, as well as an argument around ensuring that seniors have access to the outdoors and recreation. So we brought all of those messages together in one graph just to highlight the difference in convinciveness. And as we see, youth, locals don't have to pay taxes, costly by, these are all the top themes. And with that, to summarize the findings of our survey, a measure, a TOT tax measure, has majority support and could have a chance of success, although it would require plenty of educating voters. A ten-year sunset doesn't really influence their support all that much. We want to look at things that are important to voters. Bathroom repairs, lighting, graffiti, safety, wildlife habitat, wildfire protection are the most important investments for them. Talking about youth recreation and parks is also highly compelling, highly matched voters is something that's appealing to locals and, as well as the fact that tourists would be the ones paying bulk of the tax. With that, I am happy to open up the floor for questions.
Thanks, Mayor Counsel. I'm certain if you all have any questions for our friends. I also wanted to just point out, it's hotels, motels, it also would be applicable to Airbnbs in our community. So any short-term rentals, the lodging tax would be applicable to.
Aaron, did you? What, you mentioned that Democrats and women are the most likely to support. What was, did you have an even balance of Republicans and independents in the sample, or how did you figure that?
Yes, so the sample was put together based on public voter data from the state of Colorado. The way that we balance Democrats, Republicans, independents, et cetera, is all based on the real percentage of Democrats, Republicans, independents living in your city. And we've weighted the survey in separate quarters so that the survey sample is a mirror of the real-life voter population. And that goes the same for. And that goes the same for other demographic data as well, including gender, ethnicity, age, and so on.
Were the people that you polled, were they all residents of Trinidad? I missed that at the beginning, or were they county as well?
Correct, yes. All of the voters we called were Trinidad residents, were the very least people registered in Trinidad.
I just, I was curious about the fire emphasis. I don't, I mean, I know that that's a huge issue in the West, but in the city of Trinidad, I think that's an interesting anomaly in your results.
It isn't. It isn't.
It isn't.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had a question for you. When you develop this metric model and logistics, how close to accurate are your calculation percentages in terms of the voters in all of the categories?
Yes, so that would be under what are very important, which is the margin of error, which is 11.2%. So the results could range from anywhere plus or minus 11%.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. It's a really informative report, and I think that will help us move along and get stuff going.
Thank you very much for your kind effort.
And Mayor Council, just wanted to point out, and thank you, council membership, for your comments, these folks are helping with this at no cost to the city, so I just wanted to point that out to you. So thanks, and we're very fortunate for their assistance.
I don't have any questions, just thank you for the data. It's very informative, and it's great to know that this has a potential this time.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Neiman?
No questions. I appreciate the survey and giving the set pertinent information for the city of Trinidad, so thank you very much.
Hey, guys, thank you so much for how thorough this is and complete. I had two, what I think are quick questions concerning voters are more pessimistic than they were in 2018. I mean, we went from 40% to 61% of responses saying we're on the wrong track. I was curious, is there any follow-up questions to determine what influences people to have that opinion?
So fortunately, we didn't get to ask that in this survey, just given concerns around costs as well as timing, in an effort to get you all results in a very timely way. We didn't dive into exactly why they felt that way. We also wanted to introduce the ballot measures early on as we could in the survey, so it's not biased.
Right.
So it's not biased results in any way. What I can tell you is based on what I've seen around the country, because I've been looking at survey data in cities all over the country, and people are generally very upset. There are a lot of reasons for that, inflation, the economy, cost of living going up, going up, which honestly just boils all down to the same variable. Yeah, in general, things that people are upset about locally, I think, are things that people are upset about everywhere.
Yeah, understood, the poor economy definitely is a driver for lower optimism. My second question was, so we saw a swing to the negative of 21%. Is that, is that pretty much the average you're seeing across other surveys? Or are we on the low end, the high end? How do we weigh there?
Is that 21%, is that in the context of the right direction, wrong track question?
Correct.
Yeah, I would say that's on par with a lot of medium to big cities that we're seeing. Portland, for example, is especially negative. I think you guys are just about in the middle.
Okay, those are the two questions. And again, thank you so much for this, interesting, compelling information.
I know it's been said, but the fact that you did this for nothing is, I mean, free of charge is amazing. And I want you to know some of these questions, especially regarding what the citizens that you asked questions of, where they want their money put as far as recreational assets, is going to be beneficial to us, because some of those questions really surprised me, you know? I thought pickleball was all the rage, but it's especially among seniors, but it didn't bode well in this survey. So thank you very much. I don't have any questions for you. I know this is, I know this is a national trend, but I don't take it personally, and I'm not talking to you gentlemen that did the survey directly, but I, it is, it's disheartening, heartening to me that we're not doing well as far as a community in the eyes of the people that we should be serving well. And I guess we need to try a little harder to advise people in the community that, you know, this isn't city council only, this is a community, and we need your input, we need your help. And this makes me want to try harder, not that I'm not trying hard now. I want to do, I want to do a good job for the community, so thank you all very much for doing this. This is a great resource. I have a question for staff. What are we going to do with this information? How can we legally use it?
Yeah, Mayor Council, that's a great question. So this information can be used for further support from folks like Trust for Public Lands, any of our nonprofits or business entities that want to help us get our message out. This is good information for them to have to help shape the narrative on garnering any kind of support for the lodging tax question.
Okay.
Observation, may I add, I think it brings really, it really highlights the fact that if the plain language version of this is broadcast well.
More effective.
It's definitely more effective, so I mean, I think that's something to take note of. That's the only comment I have to add.
Anybody in the audience to speak for or against the ordinance? Any public comments?
See, for or against?
For or against. Either way, if you want to speak, come forward.
I was like, get a copy of that, as soon as possible.
Sir, I'm sorry, you need to speak here in the microphone, please. Well, no, that microphone, it's on, we just need to hear what you're saying. So what's going on is, last time I was talking about it, a lot of crazy stuff going on in it, and I was like, okay, I get it, it's going to be for the people that come through. The word lodging kind of, and the short-term part, make people feel, okay, so if my mom comes over, she can't buy a house, she has to rent, she's only going to rent for like three months. So like, yeah, that plain language would, like, ease people being like, no, it's not for us, it's for like, the through traffic, you know? So, but I think it's good, because definitely with the park and the historic charm, people come here, steal them in, get their farts in, get them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Paul, would you like to make a comment, sir?
No, no, it's positive, it's a good thing.
Okay. Anybody else to speak for and against, for or against? Okay, the hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Salute.
Second. You guys are fast. Call the vote, please.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Dubono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trishell?
Yes.
Yes. Item 6I, second reading of an ordinance submitting to the voters of the city of Trinidad at the general election to be held on November 5, 2024, a referendum to increase the 3% lodging tax originally authorized by the registered electors on November 6, 2001, to 6%, the proceeds of which to be used for the purposes authorized by Chapter 7, Section 7-46 of the Trinidad Municipal Code, or as may be amended as a tax increase pursuant to Section 20 of Article 10 of the Colorado Constitution. Do I have a motion?
To a vote.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
Call the vote, please.
Dubono?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry. Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trishell?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 6B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance increasing the lodging tax authorized at November 6, 2001. Election from 3% to 6% commences in January 1st, 2024, in the city of Trinidad, Colorado, on transactions of furnishings, rooms, or accommodations, the proceeds of which to be used for the purpose authorized by Chapter 7, Section 7-46 of the Trinidad Municipal Code, or as may be amended, as increased tax pursuant to Section 20 of Article 10 of the Colorado Constitution. The hearing is now open.
Mayor, members of city council, this ordinance would codify the increase into our municipal code to 6% if it's approved by voters. What I wanted to do, though, by coming forward, is call your attention to the ordinance that was placed at your seating places, and that is the ordinance that you just approved that will submit to the voters the question that will be posed to increase our sales tax, I'm sorry, our lodging tax. That question was developed through the survey process by polling the community so that they have a clear understanding of what the proceeds will be used for. So if you would just, on that previous motion, acknowledge that it was, you're approving this ordinance on second reading as amended, and if somebody would read the question that's posed, so the public understands what the question, how a question will read, I think it would be beneficial.
And Mayor Council, I'm happy to read the question if you'd like me to.
You go for it.
And I'm going to sit down unless you need to.
Can I just go question, a little quick before we go in? I just, I notice, and this is just maybe wrong, but the ordinance that we're changing is Section 742, but referred to in the ordinance in Section 746. Is that a typo, or is there a different area of the code that we're looking at?
The purposes I believe are set out in 7-46. I just looked at it right before the meeting to verify. Are you looking at the code online?
No, I'm just looking at what we have in front of us, that it says Section 742, but so what I'm understanding you're saying is that 46 talks about what it can be used for.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm going to have to verify if it's in fact, I know the question is correct because that's what I verified.
Okay, all right, well, I certainly trust you, I just wanted to make sure that we were just.
If for some reason, though, that reference is correct, incorrect, I will correct it before that ordinance is signed so that it's accurate.
Okay.
Because it is just that reference.
Okay. Thank you.
Be a scrupulous error if that's the case. Okay, I will read the question, as our friends from TPL and Denny helped us with, and again, I think Audra made a great point, that this is also the benefit of the survey and polling that we did, to fine-tune the question so it makes more sense to voters and we can understand what they're reading. So the question now we'll read, thereafter, shall the city of Trinidad taxes be increased by $550,000 annually, beginning January 1, 2025, and by such other amounts raised annually thereafter, by the imposition of an excise tax on lodging in the amount of 6%, which replaces the 3% lodging tax approved by voters in 2001, with the proceeds to be used for community projects, programs, and services that, among other things, in conformance with Section 7-46 of the Trinidad Municipal Code, maintain local parks and playgrounds by cleaning up graffiti, repairing park bathrooms, and increasing safety lighting, repair and develop city parks, trails, and playgrounds to support local youth sports and disabled access, maintain open space and reduce wildfire risk by removing brush and invasive species, attract and support new conventions and conferences, festivals, and events to boost the local economy, with all expenditure subject to annual audits, and shall all revenues from such taxes and any earnings thereon be collected, retained, and spent as a voter-approved revenue change without limitation or conditions, and notwithstanding any revenue or expenditure limitations contained in Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado Constitution or any other law.
And then the vote is yes for and no against?
Exactly.
Okay. Aaron, do you have any other?
I just noticed that in the part where Mr. Rieger, where you read repair and develop city parks, you added "and" before disabled access?
Yeah.
So do we need that in there?
I don't think so, no, that was, so, it would read for that bullet point, repair and develop city parks, trails, and playgrounds to support local youth sports, disabled access.
Okay.
It should say "and."
It should say "and," okay. I added an "and," we'll add an "and" to that.
Okay. Elon, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
No, none.
No, no, no. No questions.
No question, Mayor.
I have none either. Would anybody in the audience like to speak for or against? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cutler?
Quick question. Julie Kinsen, just here as a citizen, not with purgatory watershed ownership. I fully support this tax, but I don't think I heard an explanation in this description that it wasn't on me. And I think that happened last time, too, is that I understand that it's a lodging tax and I'm not paying anything, but when I heard that reading, I'm still hearing it's a tax and I'm not hearing that I'm not paying for that.
And Mayor Council, we have to conform to certain requirements of Tabor, so that part of the question is kind of non-negotiable. Unfortunately, we would like to put, without raising your taxes or something like that. Unfortunately, we just don't have the wiggle room under Tabor to do that, so this is standard prescribed ballot language. But we are saying that the imposition of an excise tax on lodging in the amount, so hopefully that's implied, but certainly that's something for our friends with TPL and others who want to help us talk about the question should definitely get word out, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Julie.
Yeah, I just, I really want to see this pass, and I know the wording was frankly not good last time, it was very confusing. I don't know if we can do articles in the Chronicle or what we can do to get the word out, but I know that a lot of people here, the instant they see tax, they're like, nope. So we've really got to front-load much more education on this before the vote happens.
I have a word for, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had a question for Mr. Rieger. Will there be arguments for and against, like they do sometimes in ballots?
They certainly can, so, and Les can speak to this better than I can, but as soon as we set the ballot question after approval, well, tonight, now that we've said it, we can no longer advocate for or against. What the city can do is put out factual information only, so we would rely on our partners and other organizations to, you know, say what they want to about the ballot question.
But I believe there, I'm sorry, don't interrupt, I believe there will be a blue book commentary.
Correct.
Right, sorry, again, so to answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
That can explain it.
I have a question, Amy.
Yeah.
Are other agencies, I mean, potentially like Chamber of Commerce or anyone else like that, are they allowed to, what would be more closely called advertise for that? I mean, I understand they may not be inclined to, but can they legally?
Yeah, Mayor Council, they definitely can. I did provide our support friends at TPL with contact information for various representatives that we thought might be in good support, so the hotel community, the chamber, and there was a couple of others, so they're going to help us reach out to them and see if they would be willing to, you know, or at least be educated about it to the point where they can put information out on the question.
Awesome. Thank you, Julie.
Yeah, thanks, Julie.
So, Mr. Downs, is the way this, this question is read... So, Mr. Downs, is the way this question is read, is this considered plain language?
I guess it depends on who you ask. But yes, it's considered plain language.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Anybody else in the audience to speak for and against? Yes, ma'am.
I just was curious.
Can you come up, please? I'm sorry, we have to get everybody.
We can't hear you. So it's recorded, I understand. So, name your name.
Allison Finston, business owner. Returning. This is a dumb question, but I know you have regulations on how it can be written. But next to lodging, can you put hotels, B&Bs, things like that? It can't be edited?
We could look into that, that might be.
Because that would be, oh, it's not me.
No, it's.
That's a good point.
I will tell you. As you said, we were absolutely looking into that. There's been a lot of work on the wording of this and a lot of tweaking. So we will certainly explore that possibility. This is kind of what a lot of really talented people have arrived at. I'm certainly not putting myself in that category. So that's any comfort to everybody. But really talented, but anyway, we will certainly look into that and do that if we can. Thank you.
Can Denny answer that question?
Yeah, it might be a question for Denny or if Jason's still on the line.
Denny, did you hear that question?
What was the question?
The question was, somebody from the audience suggested that behind lodging, that we put in parenthesis hotel, motel, Airbnb.
Oh, I would say personally, I'm not sure if you can do that or not. I would need to check with our internal council, who are all in Florida right now. So, but I can check that.
Yeah. Good, Jason, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. Anybody else going once, going twice to speak for or against the ordinance? There being none, the hearing is closed. Public hearing for consideration of an amended ordinance increasing the lodging tax authorized at November 6, 2001 election from 3% to 6%.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think we need you to read B. B.I.
Okay.
I'm starting to read.
I'm sorry. I got lost.
No, you're good. We got you.
Well, I didn't think I asked for the amended ordinance.
You did.
I did not ask for the amended ordinance. This, we just closed the hearing.
Right.
Yeah. Am I right?
Yeah, but you were reading the public hearing section.
B.
Yeah, so I think we're on B.I. B.I. And then you'll read it, and then we'll ask for a motion.
Okay.
Yep.
You're the boss. Item B.I., second reading of an ordinance, an amended ordinance increasing the lodging tax authorized at the November 1st, I'm sorry, November 6, 2001 election from 3% to 6% commencing January 1, 2025 in the city of Trinidad, Colorado on transactions of furnishings rooms or accommodations, proceeds of which to be used for the purpose authorized by Chapter 7, Section 7-46 of the Trinidad Municipal Code, or as may be amended, as an increased tax pursuant to Section 20 of Article 10 of the Colorado Constitution. I need a motion.
For the amended?
Yeah, I said amended.
Yeah, just making sure the motion has amended.
Yes. Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Trehal?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Yes. On the powers that be to my right is everything.
Yes.
Okay, good. Item 7, unfinished business, we have none. Item 8, miscellaneous business. Item 8, a special event permit application for malt vineyards and spirituous filed by Kiwanis Club of Trinidad at 206 North Animus Street. Mr. Blasie is here to represent the Kiwanis Club. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Blasie?
Nope.
Let's go ahead.
No. We're good?
We're good.
Okay. All right. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Can't vote until Mr. Shu's back. We're calling for vote.
Hope you're not voting for me.
Yes, we are. Can we have? Okay, call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes. Item 8B, special event permit application for malt vineyards and spirituous filed by Trinidad, Los Angeles County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at 201 West Main Street. Mrs. Romero is in the audience. If you have any questions, questions?
I do not have any questions.
Eliot, questions?
No, ma'am.
None.
None?
None at all.
No questions.
No questions, Mayor?
I have none as well. Call for the motion? I need a motion, so moved. Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Grigal?
Yes. Item 8C, consideration of a temporary modification of premise permit filed by Hollywood Bar and Cafe LLC at 1133 North Linden Avenue. Mr. Banning is not here. I refer to Mr. Downs. Do we proceed with the?
I want to say no.
Okay.
I mean, the applicant needs to be here. I think that's protocol. And I, you know, I'm sorry, I hate to be that person, but I just think that the person needs to be here. In case you have questions and, you know, if you have issues, they need to be here to present. So I think that this is not where I'd be put on the next agenda.
Yeah, Mayor, you may want to ask for a motion to postpone to September 3.
I would make a motion to postpone item 8C, consideration of temporary modification of premise permit filed by Hollywood Bar and Cafe LLC at 1133 North Linden to the next available regular City Council meeting on September 3.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigal?
Yes. Item D, appointment and alternate appointment to the CML's 2024 to 25 Policy Committee. If you look at our notes, I am the representative of the city to CML and Mr. Trehal, my left-hand guy here, is my alternate. Do I have a motion to continue on with the two representatives have stated?
If you will, and so moved.
Second.
Call the vote.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grigal?
Yes. Item 8E, consideration of employment agreement with Michael Valentine to serve as acting city manager. Questions? Why, you were given his contract. Erin, do you have any questions?
I had one question. I'm assuming this is kind of a retrit of the one we took before then?
Kind of.
Because it says, 10B says, in lieu of termination, the City Council may request the manager transfer manager back to the sole role of utility director. In this event, no severance will be paid.
Okay, sorry about that. No, there were a lot of references to prior employment, and I thought I got them all.
Okay.
Obviously, that was not caught. So I would like to just line that out.
As amended?
Yes, please. And Mr. Valentine is here in support of his, his agenda item. Yeah.
Welcome back, Carter. Do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Thanks.
No, none. None at all.
No questions.
No questions, ma'am.
I have a question.
What's wrong with you, ma'am?
That's a good question.
The contract, I need a clarification on the beginning date. Is it August 24th or August 26th? Because the 24th is a Saturday. Does that coincide with the payroll?
It coincides with my last day, Mayor. So my last day is the 23rd. So I think the intent is to have immediate transition.
So it is the 24th. Okay, and item 10, 10A, under termination, we give, is the severance payment applicable?
No, no. No severance.
Can we delete that as well?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve Mr. Valentine's employment agreement. With the two amendments, item 10B is deleted. Item 10A regarding severance pay is also deleted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Grigal?
Yes. Welcome back, Mr. Valentine. Item 8F, a resolution adopting the strategic plan of the city of Trinidad, Colorado. I would like to read the resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, adopting the city of Trinidad's strategic plan. Whereas strategic planning offers a plethora of benefits that can significantly contribute to the city's successes. And whereas the city's strategic planning efforts will help make decisions that align with the city's mission, vision, and strategic objectives over the next five years. And whereas the purpose of strategic planning is to guide growth, innovation, and long-term success. And whereas the City Council, having realized the benefits of setting goals through a strategic planning effort, has resulted in the development of a vision, mission, and strategic priorities to guide Trinidad's future for the ensuing years. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, do hereby adopt the attached strategic plan of the city of Trinidad and direct staff to cause the implementation of the plan to the best of their abilities. Introduce, read, and adopt at this date. Anybody have any questions?
I do not.
No additions or?
No.
Mr. Thurman?
No, ma'am, Mayor.
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank those of you on Council that sat and went through this with, I can't remember.
Marv.
Marv. Apologies to Marv. But, and also a big thank you to staff who really did the hard work on, we did the easy work, and staff has come up with the detailed description of what it's going to take to reach our goals. So thank you very much, any of you that were involved in that. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second? Call the vote.
DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigal?
Continuing on, have you noticed our miscellaneous items are long these days? Item 8G, first reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 7, 8, and 11 of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code and setting a public hearing on September 17, 2024 at 6:00 P.M. Hi, Erin.
Hi. Okay, good evening, Council.
Before we get started in this item and in conjunction with this item, I'd like to make a statement, read a statement for you, Mayor and council members. I am writing this letter in response to the questions posed by council at the August 12, 2024 work session regarding the creation of a Parks and Recreation Department and the hiring of Assistant Public Works Director. First, for the Parks and Rec/Community Enrichment Department. As a result of the 2024 strategic plan, council entrusted staff with the development of a Parks and Rec Department by 2025. Having the maintenance of public parks and other outdoor recreation venues within the Public Works Department does not allow either department to function to their full potential or to effectively complete the tasks assigned to them and produce quality work. We have a Sports and Recreation Director, an Outdoor Recreation Director, and a Landscape and Project Coordinator. They should be working together within a Parks Department to achieve the desired result of beautiful parks and excellent recreation programs. Combining these departments into one and creating Division Program Directors will improve the services we offer. In addition, creating the Community Enrichment Division under this department will bring together a part of our tourism efforts and allow these two divisions to work together for better resources and manpower. To achieve effective results, it is necessary to hire a director to lead this effort. We need an individual who can coordinate these activities, provide assistance and resources so that each one of these programs is successful. This person will plan and organize workloads and staff assignments, develop short and long-range goals, and coordinate the department activities with other departments. This person will be boots on the ground to get the work done. All of our directors are working directors who prioritize serving the community over spending their time leading from their offices. Second, the Assistant Public Works Director, which is a new position. This position could just as easily be titled a Public Works Superintendent. But the main gist of this position is to provide direct supervision over the Public Works Department and fleet maintenance. We cannot continue down the same path we are on and expect anything to get better. The work expected and required of one Public Works Director is simply too much and not achievable with the current setup requiring the management of four departments. Over the past several months, we have interviewed and spoken with no fewer than three people who are more than qualified to be a Public Works Director based on their experience in road maintenance, snow removal, excavation, and public property maintenance. All stated, they would not consider working in this position as the workload is simply too much for one person. They knew they would be unable to be effective in that position. It is simply not possible to analyze this position without understanding the city as a whole. Over the past 10 years, we have maintained or slowly reduced our staff to get a balanced budget. As an example, back in 2014, we had eight people in the Parks Department and 10 people in the Street and Bridge. Today, we have 14 people in the Combined Department. Likewise, we no longer have an administrative support in the Public Works Department. We have one less engineering tech. We no longer have an administrative assistant for the city manager. We are down one person in both gas and water and have only within the last three months brought power and life up to where they need to be. Even though we may not have decreased staff in other departments, nor have we increased it, while the workload has exponentially increased over the last several years. To save hits to the budget, we simply add work to current staff. We shift work to those who have capacity at any given time, but that makes our work inconsistent at best and truly unsustainable at worst. Management theory has a concept, span of control. This refers to the number of individuals or resources that one supervisor can manage effectively. The optimal span of control is one to seven subordinates with five being optimal. The success of this concept is obvious when we look at our utility departments. Each of those departments have one director and one discipline. The result is that when any one of them, Steve, Mark, or Dave, get up in front of you to make a presentation, they can respond to your questions without hesitation. While one reason is because they are very knowledgeable about their areas of expertise, the main reason is because they work in one discipline with a low number of direct reports and are therefore able to manage and lead their departments very effectively. They do incredible work for the city. And if our community has questions about their salaries, that information is public. But needless to say, they provide services to our residents that far exceed their compensation. However, none of them make $100,000. This is not the same story in Public Works. We have one director overseeing seven direct reports with four distinct areas, each with numerous variables. And we are asking that director to be an immediate expert in all of these areas at any given time. Additionally, this individual handles ADA, floodplain, and building maintenance issues. This is neither fair nor logical. Public Works is highly visible to our community and visitors. It's important to note that people often notice what isn't getting done but fail to recognize the accomplishments. Perhaps this layout worked in the past, but there is simply too much going on now for one manager to be successful at this job. Again, over the past 10 years, the workload has steadily increased with the creation of more parks and public lands, and the crews have either decreased or stayed the same. And yet, we continue to plan new build-outs, i.e. the Riverwalk project, which will add a great deal more work to the current staff. Yes, we could hire more people to work on the crews, but without proper management and leadership, they will not be successful. As managers, it is our responsibility to provide our employees with the necessary tools, resources, and training to effectively perform their jobs. Failing to provide proper management means denying employees the resources they need to succeed and consequently depriving the community of the benefits of their success. We are setting ourselves up as a city to fail in the name of a conservative budget, and this is nothing to be proud of. Taking an even broader look at the organization, the city manager currently has 19 direct reports. That is an impossible number of people to manage and still be expected to carry out all the other responsibilities and duties expected from that position. Asking to add a Public Works Assistant Director and a Parks and Rec Director to the org chart removes only three direct reports, dropping him to 16. This is still far from manageable, but at least it is a step in the right direction. To answer Councilperson Williamson's question about budget, I am not sure how we can afford this, but we have to. We are not the only municipality dealing with budget shortfalls. We can look to others for a model, but we have to commit to finding a solution. It is time to begin to ask how we can make something happen rather than putting up barriers from the beginning, which only results in a subpar outcome. Councilperson Ogletree stated it very well when she said, "We need to have vision to make things happen." We need to make that vision our priority, our goal, and begin chipping away at barriers and making small steps towards that goal. I felt it was imperative for me to impress you about this issue since I failed to respond to your questions at the work session. I acknowledge that. It is essential that I inform you, however, that I was completely taken aback by the hostility and negativity directed towards the city manager and myself. I can accept disagreement. The foundation of our democratic structure is that of intelligent debate, not in an effort to belittle or win, but with the understanding that we are both working towards the same goals. What I cannot accept is hostility, humiliation, and disrespect, especially in a public forum in front of our residents and community. The disparaging comments made about city staff can only be heard and brushed off for so long. It will not be long before a desire to serve the community and see it the best that it can be will not supersede the mental and physical well-being of our staff members. We are not asking for constant praise. We are asking for respect, support, and the opportunity to do our work with the resources that we need. It is our job to give our employees the tools they need to be successful. It is your job to give us the guidance and kindness for us to thrive, not as employees, but also as human beings. We cannot continue down this path. We need to remember why we are here and what our common goals are. We will never do that if we cannot remember that we are people first, and only then will our community prosper. We are not here for ourselves. There is no need for negativity, misinformation, and untruths to save face. Our community deserves a council and staff that can remember that our community is our priority, not ourselves. And that is reflected in how we move forward together with dignity and grace. Thank you. And now, I will answer questions.
Let's start with the left, Eric.
So referring back to the work session. I, even at the time, had an understanding of what the additional jobs were, what the intention of those were. As you mentioned, Donna, just now, obviously, it's a concern as to how we need to pay for it. That goes without saying. And I think it's something that we need to figure out so that we can form these new departments and move forward effectively, especially, as you mentioned, we're looking at adding any number of amenities. And that does nothing but increase coordination required and needed. As we go forward and step into that, I mean, it's going to be incumbent on upcoming city managers to work closely within the budget constraints to find a way to do that. So at the same time, it's alleviating a problem. It's also adding a fiscal responsibility to upcoming city managers and to all of us in general. But I understand the need to actually I have no specific questions, Mayor.
Mayor, it's a lot of information. Thanks, Donna, for that. As far as Parks and Recs and other parts of Trinidad needs funding. So I think it's hard to go forward when we have to deal with city management and new city lawyer and all that kind of thing.
Yes.
No questions. I just wanted to point it out to the public to make sure that they know where we are. This is always on our mind to do what is right for the city to ask.
Mayor, do you have any other questions?
Like you see, there was a couple changes from the work session when you said it was going to be cleaned up. I actually really like that. And I've been a huge proponent of this rework anyway, because it's something that is far needed. And I do agree with you 100%. There is more work to be done on this. But as time goes on, we will fund it one day or another to make it more convenient and actually more effective. Because you guys are doing an amazing job with everything that you guys do. The workload is intense. And just wanted to let you guys know, we really appreciate you. The citizens out there really appreciate the work that these guys put out there 24/7. Thank you.
Frank, do you have any?
No, thank you, Donna, for the report. It was very informative. I think you did a lot of work on it. And I think everybody on our council will appreciate it. And I think everybody got a better understanding of what you were trying to explain. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna, for everything you and the staff do. Failure is not an option, so thank you.
That was eloquent and brave.
Thank you.
I also had a question. Is anything in there opposed to this reorganization plan? Or is what you're saying reflected in what we're planning to do?
Yes, it's reflected in what we're planning to do.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Donna, for doing that. I appreciate that. You know, it's sitting in my chair. So we're, you know, I've been for six years. But sitting in this chair, apologies and understanding. That's trying to count some.
Reading about you.
I understand, and I understand. And I apologize. That shouldn't happen in a council meeting. It shouldn't happen. But thank you so much. I, this is something that's a long time coming.
It is.
And I really truly believe that once we get this reorganization completed, that we're going to not only find the money, but we're going to, I think it's going to make us more efficient.
I agree.
Yeah, I think this plan might be itself. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I need someone to introduce. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
How about?
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 8H, first reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 8-121 Administrative Officers, Departmental and Personnel Charts of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code and Setting a Public Hearing on September 17 at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, so here I am again. So some of this stuff we're doing is cleaning up the ordinances. Over the years, we've made changes to the organization and I'm not updating the ordinance. So one of those examples is that in the ordinance, there was no natural gas director called out. So I'm not sure why we've been paying Steve all this time. It should have been a break before us, right? Anyway, we needed to clean that up. And then this would also identify the Parks and Rec, the new Parks and Recreation Department, and then also call out the Community Development Director, which is Nathan. So it's a lot of cleanup. Frank? Questions on the left?
No questions.
I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 8I, first reading of an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 10 of Chapter 2 Administration Municipal Utility Department of the Trinidad Municipal Code and setting a public hearing on September 17, 24 at 6:00 p.m. Oh, hi. You can do the introduction here.
This is another cleanup ordinance, just to reference natural gas departments in there. And also, I reflect the current operations of the sewer department and changed the title so that it's municipal utilities instead of municipal utility departments.
Has something to do with the gas department, too, it's valuable?
Yes. Yes, that.
Okay, I need someone to be introduced. This is the ordinance.
I'll introduce you.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Trigell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 9, council reports. Do you want to start out, Mr. Williamson?
I certainly can. I just wanted to reiterate from news from South Central Council Government, we are proceeding with, we're eating with one project, and that's going to be a signage project on Highway 12. It's going to highlight the historic and scenic byway status that Highway 12 has. It should be a really nice tour and dovetail into several other things that are going on in that area. And what South Central Council Government is involved in is we're administering the grant that does it. So it's actually a C dot grant spending or putting that money in there. So that should be really nice. Secondly, we are moving forward with building a transportation hub building that's going to be used for maintenance, and that's going to allow for increased public transportation in the area. That would be regionally in Trinidad, but also wider to Morphano County and out east to some of the cities there. So we're going to be extending those services. Then as a follow-up, and I know it's probably on many of our minds here, we weren't able to fully have the discussion for the work session concerning what I would say are effectively crimes, vandalism, and any other crimes associated with what's going on that was discussed tonight. I just wanted to make a request, if I may, Mr. Ruger, for the next soonest work session to be made available so that we might have that discussion with legal counsel as we weren't able to have it before due to a pre-existing scheduling conflict. I think it's just important to note, many of these problems could be helped to some level. I'm not saying cured. It could be helped to some level with additional rules and codes that we can come up with together, just if that can happen. That would be my report.
Me?
No questions, no more.
Main Street Board has met, but it is pretty much the same that they've been collaborating with the Creative District to kind of get this, get like this going. Also, I agree with you. And I think we're all going to be, you know, on the same line. But pretty much it was just an update on a coordinator that was, they're looking to get a coordinator in to kind of delegate and get these things off the ground and get some stuff moving over there. So it was a great meeting, lots of information. I believe it was on Zoom? It was on Zoom, so it is recorded. If anyone is interested to go back to the link, it's really kind of informative to see kind of our stats that are in there and how forward we actually are on this. So thank you, and that's all, Mayor.
Well, I don't have anything this week.
No? You have?
I have got you.
Eric?
I got to listen in on that. I was driving back on the home coalition. And I am so impressed with Detective Sergeant Lay and her corraling all of those groups together. And I think it is going to actually be a very effective tool in dealing with people who are vagrant as well as unhoused. So I'm just really glad. Ms. Rollo was correct. She spoke with me the night I ran this office a long time ago. And we have come a long way, but we really do need to do a lot more. And I agree with you. I think we need okay, the association met. And I just mentioned to them that, Mr. Valentine, we're going to want to sit down with them to talk through reworking the agreements that we have and helping them to get on the right track for the next year. And what Ms. Jimenez said about the Creative District was really valuable and true. We've done a lot of work last week on the Creative District branding and helping to focus that organization on what it's supposed to do, which is to be an economic driver in this area for businesses that are focused on creative pursuits. And they are definitely getting together. They had, the city funded a branding group to come in, and they did a phenomenal job, and I can't wait for y'all to see it. That is all.
That's a teaser and a half.
Yes. Okay.
I'm going to start with the not as important stuff first. Our Fall District Meeting for CML is going to be September 18 in Lobita. So I urge council and So I urge council and staff ones to go to attend. And also on the 26th, Pinyon Canyon has invited us down there for, what do they call that?
Community?
Community Day or?
Engagement.
Community Engagement, yes. I don't want to just be disciplined by the... And I promised to talk about the homeless issue and I understand. And I understand Ms. Kusamano, where your business is at, where Inbank's business is at. It seems like those businesses in that area are going to, are affected more than most. So I think with this committee that we've started, we need to talk to them and talk about maybe alternative sites to serve the needs of the homeless. Because it seems, I think, and don't quote me on this, but I think what's happening is they're feeding breakfast at the, at Chino Park and that's a congregation spot. And they're also feeding, I think it's just Sunday dinner, they don't eat there every night. But it's, it's, it's become a gathering point. And there are good and bad in all layers of society. And that's no exception with the homeless. So we have to do, we have to talk with, through the Homeless Coalition to try and better specifically that area of town. I go by there every day, I see and I understand. And I, I'm truly sorry that your businesses and your properties are suffering. And you know, there's only X amount we can do as a government. There, we are limited by rules and regulations ourselves, but we understand the issue. We acknowledge the issue and we're going to try to get a good conclusion to some of the issues that you all have been suffering through. That being said, the Homeless Coalition applied for a grant to get a, what was the term that they used, a coordinator?
Coordinator.
And so now Trinidad has partnered with Walsenburg, Morphano County, Los Anamos County, Walsenburg, Trinidad, to get a coordinator for the Homeless Coalition to try and make decisions that are beneficial both to the homeless and to the community as well. So if you haven't seen any action on any homeless decisions or any homeless issues, it's because the executive, it's, it's, it's hard to explain, but government also, we always need a foundation. You have to do the groundwork first before you can actually get into the trenches and, and solve the problems. So this coalition, Ms. Knudsen is part of the coalition, the executive board, excuse me. So we're, they've been working diligently for a whole year. We've been on this for a whole year. And you know, some of the comments that were made, I understand where the problem's coming from and we're going to see if we can resolve it. And I'm sincerely sorry that you're going through that. I, I understand it completely. My family and I use Chino Park a lot for lunch breaks and I see it on a daily basis. So I apologize and tell you that we are going to make every effort to do a better job. So thank you for expressing your consent.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
I really appreciate that. And last but definitely not least, we have to say goodbye and adios mucho. To Mr. Ruber, this is his last meeting tonight.
Happy trails. As City Manager.
As City Manager. And please don't come back for communications additions because I don't think I'm going to recognize you. But I want to thank you for the two years that you have served our community. You've definitely added a different perspective, your professionalism. Really appreciated and you've been, on a personal level, very, very easy to work with. I think I giggled more with you than I, with Mr. Valentine, we used to just curse. I giggle. And it's, I so appreciate your demeanor. Your respect for the community is, and I wish you nothing but the best, or nothing but the best. And if Chicago or Evanston doesn't want you anymore, we don't want you back.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Reports by City Manager and City Attorney.
So Mayor, Council, just a few things tonight. So I wanted to start by letting you know, we had a meeting today about putting together a schedule of fees for the city. So we're doing an analysis of where we're essentially donating a lot of our services for, for private entities. And while it's, it's great to do that, we really do need to have cost recovery. Sometimes when we have a big private event and our crews are out setting up for that, that's work that they're not doing for, for the rest of the residents. And we just want to be fair and make sure we're getting recouped for those fees so that we can put that money right back into serving our community. Some of it involves rentals of our facilities, that type of thing. So what we will ask the council to do is adopt the schedule of fees by resolution. Some of the fees you'll see in there will be prescribed in ordinance. Some of them we can just set administratively or through policy. But at the end of the day, we want to get to just a master schedule that we can put on our website. So very clear where our fees are for all across the board on, on the services that we provide. Holy Trinity, I wanted to give you an update on our grant funding. So we applied for two grants last spring. One was called Stronger Communities and then one was called More Housing Now. And they are in tandem with each other, both from DOLA to rehabilitate Church Street and then provide some basic infrastructure to the old school and the convent for the affordable housing project that's proposed there. We are working through some of the details with the developers. We have a tight deadline of September 30th to sign off on those, one of the grant agreements. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, there's some action that needs to be taken at the planning and zoning level and at the council level. But particularly would be a development agreement to do a deed restriction on the property as well. That has to happen in order for us to move forward. So we're close to $3.25 million with both grants. And we were going to work very hard to make sure that we don't have to give that back and make this successful. So we will fight for that. But I will say the city is doing everything it can to help offset some of the costs. Mr. Just has offered to do the engineering on the project, which is a huge favor to preserving grant funding that can actually go into the construction and make for an even better project. So we didn't originally contemplate that, but at this point, in trying to find every dollar we can to ensure it's successful, he's going to offer those services. The RFP for City Manager and Police Chief for the search firms to help us with that go out this week. So we're, we're ready to get moving on that. I'm sure Mr. Valentine wants a quick process on that, too. But we will, we will keep you posted on that. And then you all will be involved in the selection of those firms since they will be certainly working at your behest to select the next City Manager. With that, we are, plug your ears, Les, looking at how we're moving forward with, you know, the replacement for our legal counsel as well. So we are looking at doing a solicitation for either an individual or a firm and see what we get and see who responds to that. You all can kind of do the analysis as to what works best. I wanted to mention that we're working on re-upping, I would say, our agreement with the jail to be able to house inmates that stem from municipal court, at least be able to threaten people with jail time as is prescribed in our general penalty. I apologize, Adra, do you know, I know we're working on that. Are we close to having it signed at some point?
It should be very, we can do it very soon.
Okay. Maybe we'll make that happen before I leave so I can have my signature on that. But yes, we're in the final phases of that and we'll get that signed ASAP. I think that's a good thing to have now. I want to make, we do have to pay to house inmates, of course. But it, it might be another enforcement tool that we can have moving forward. And then last but not least, I just wanted to thank you all as the council. You've been very supportive of me. And I, I just have really enjoyed working with you all and former Mayor Rico over the past couple of years. I think we've done some really good things. I am more than optimistic for Trinidad. I know we hear a lot of negativity in our community and that seems to be contagious. And I don't think, as we're seeing from our friends from Trust for Public Lands, that's unique to Trinidad. So it's good to take our minds out of that it's a Trinidad problem. It's just kind of where society is at right now, a lot of people hurting and, and suffering. But what I will say is the amount of good, decent, wonderful, hardworking people that I've met and become friends with in the community is impressive. And I think that they're the ones that really make this town so special and so spectacular. I, I agree with what Donna said earlier in that I think we can definitely have our disagreements. But it's so much better to disagree, and I'm talking about some of the lamb bashing we get sometimes from the public. And instead of being critical of us, let's talk about how we can work together to solve problems. And I think that, you know, every town's going to have that, we have our share here. But I don't want that to be kind of the black cloud over the goodness that I think we see in our, in our wonderful community. So I just wanted to thank you all. But most importantly, or as importantly, the staff here does work their butts off. I've been really impressed, having 18, 19 direct reports is a challenge. It's very difficult. But fortunately, we have a lot of directors who are self-sufficient and they can run their, their programs without much leadership other than me just being supportive when they need me to be. So I haven't been in a position where I've really had to micromanage a lot of the different departments. And that's also a unique thing, too. So I think we can be very confident in the team we have here at the city. I've been in union negotiations and worked with the rank and file on talking about how we can come up with good agreements that benefit both sides. And I just see these people work day in and day out. I go visit them in the trenches and we really are, are very fortunate to have the workforce that we have. So I wanted to thank them for their support as well. And that is my report tonight.
Steve Ruber, everybody.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Downs, do you have a...
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. I want to begin by letting you know that staff is looking at kind of a thing that we have not done before. And that is regarding all the dilapidated properties that exist in the city of Trinidad, we're looking at the possibility and really pursuing what are called legally in-rem actions against some of these properties. And what we're going to be doing is trying to have a number of these properties legally declared to be nuisance properties. And by getting judicial intervention on these things, we feel like the city would be better insulated and would give us a tool, a further tool in, in dealing with some of these, these properties. Excuse me, historically, what we've done is we have, you know, after trying very hard to find who the owners are and whether or not we're successful in that, then condemning the properties for, for whatever reason. And in pursuing that, and then eventually bulldozing the property and then leaning the property. With that, of course, there is a certain amount of exposure that the city has in terms of, you know, someone could always come back against us and say that we did something incorrectly. So by doing this, we feel like we would be better insulated, again legally, in, in doing this for a number of properties. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I also wanted to tell you that in municipal court yesterday, there were a lot more filings, there were many more cases in municipal court, including several filings for fireworks. And I thought you would be glad to know that. I didn't realize until we had a docket day, you know, after the 4th of July. Most of the cases were for throwing fireworks, not like exploding, you know, large organs kind of things. But the, the police department is obviously enforcing and doing their best to enforce the fireworks laws and prosecuting people for, for doing that. It also, there were a lot more traffic cases and just many more cases. One thing, well, the next thing I, I wanted to say to all of you, and that is this. Now that everyone, excuse me, knows that I've resigned as City Attorney with the effective date of my resignation being October 6th, 2024, while I'm looking forward to passing the proverbial torch to my successor, I just want to say that I want you to know that I will be available to you if you need me. And I'm not, you know, just drawing a line in the sand. I, I will be available if you, you need me. I want to say that in terms of the people in City Hall and in the city's employ, I am forever impressed and amazed by my colleagues. And Donna's comments tonight were way impressive. And I've never been more proud of a colleague than I, than I am of Donna. But, but I just wanted to say that. Lastly, thank you, Steve. You have been a pleasure to work with and you're a consummate professional. I know you try very hard and you're, you're a really good guy. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Downs. I don't know if I should take this personally or if I should blame Manny, but the only two changes on council from the beginning of the year is him being elected and me being mayor. You guys are... How does that sit? Tell me it ain't true. No, thank you.
It's not you, it's us.
Item 11, executive session for conference constituents for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS 24-6-4024B, boards and commissions. Motion to go into executive session?
Someone?
Second? Call the vote, please. DeBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes. We will not have a vote after the executive session. But let's take a little break, it's 8:05. Let's take a break.